I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of the Board of Education September 18th, 2019. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as our freedom.
Next time we have to let them.
They let it. That's great. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire our passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda? Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Comments and questions from interested citizens? Melissa Tolino? That's you. No. That's you. Thanks.
Well, I expect to get called first, but okay. My name is Melissa Tolino. I have three children in the district. One has graduated in 2015, and I have two children at Pine Tree. As of tomorrow, my son Mason Tolino, who is six years old and in the second grade, is being kicked out of this district. He is unvaccinated. He can no longer come to school because of this law that was put into place. I just feel at a loss right now. There is nobody helping us. It's just closing the door. I received a certified letter telling me that my son, notification of exclusion based on immunization. That's a really, that's a bad word right there, exclusion. So he's being segregated, he's being discriminated because he's unvaccinated. So my question is, I would like the district, I already know Elsie stands on this, but I would like to know if the Board of Ed will write a letter on behalf of these children asking for a stay because there was no time given. Maine just implemented this law back in September of 2018, and it doesn't go into effect until 2021, September 1st. They had three years, they had 14 days. Do you know what that would do to a child, to pump them with all these, you know, neurotoxins, these injections? Aborted fetus? I cannot do it. Religiously, I cannot do it. My belief is, I am against abortion. And I'm not going to allow an aborted fetus to be injected into my children, somebody else's DNA, someone else's child, to be put into my child. Will not do it. So I stand firm in my belief. I will not change, but what I'm hoping is that maybe you guys can take into consideration that maybe this wasn't the right call. I'm lucky that I was able to get a doctor to write my fifth grader a medical exception because he is vaccine injured, actually. That's what brought me to learning about the ingredients of what's in a vaccination. And that's what made me open my eyes and say, oh my God. My God says abortion is wrong. So why would I inject that into my child? And I feel that I have that right to say, I'm not doing this. But my heart is ripping apart. My six-year-old, who's in second grade, does not understand why he can no longer go to school. We've had a conversation last night. He knew he was going for 14 days. He knew that the day was coming, and I spoke to him about it. And he said, so they don't want me to go to school because I am unvaccinated? He's six, he doesn't understand it. I don't know how to explain it to him, but just the fact that he can no longer come to school. I'm praying to God with the seven lawsuits that are out there that somebody will say, wait a minute, that one judge will actually say, constitutionally, this is not right. How can you discriminate a child? A child with HIV and a child with Hep B can come to school and have HIPAA rights, but my child, who's unvaccinated, has no rights. He's not filled with any viruses or disease that he's going to sit next to another child and give that to them. My children are extremely healthy, actually pretty much close to almost perfect attendance. They are never sick. They never go to the doctors. My children are no threat to anybody. And I feel that with this law has now pushed us out, and now I have to expose ourselves. That's HIPAA. Where does no child gets left behind come into play? Where does DASSA? Where does, where does my son, as a U.S. citizen, no longer have any rights in a state that I pay taxes to? So now I am left tomorrow after picking him up from school, that's it. I don't know what to do. I have to homeschool him? To be honest with you, I don't know where to begin. I'm terrified of the task. But I also am sad that he can no longer socially be out there playing with other children, and it's heartbreaking.
Thank you.
So I hope that you guys will maybe consider, many other districts in the state have written letters saying, just please, put this stay until the lawsuit's figured out and let our children come to school. It's 26,000 children in New York State that no longer can go to school. So I will leave on that note because I know I've probably over my time.
Thank you.
But I hope that you guys will help us out. Thank you.
Two people from your family, the Tolino family? Thank you.
Is that Iris?
Yes.
Okay. So it's Iris.
I have a stool, but Mia's stool higher for her to, she can just talk into one another microphone.
Yeah.
You can talk here.
There you go.
You've got this.
My name is Iris Tolino.
You've got this. You can do it. You can. This is real. Go ahead. You can do it. Go ahead. I'm right here next to you. I'm right here next to you. Go ahead. Right here. It's okay. Mommy's here. My name is...
My name is Iris Tolino, and I'm in third grade in Central Valley Elementary School. I am so, so sad and terrified about not being able to go to school anymore. We were making the choice to make so many kids sad. I will miss my friends and teachers a lot because of you. I love coming to school and learning new things. I worked really hard last year. I love art class. I'm going on field trips. Being a part of school events like Field Day is so much fun. I need you to fight for kids like me to go to school. I am a healthy girl. I am not a threat to anyone. I have the right to get an education. Please stand up for me, please.
I have to. You are my hero. Okay. Good job. Yes, you can. You can go sit down. I can't see. It's a tough act to follow.
My husband's words, we're supposed to introduce who I am. I've been here before. My name is Kathleen Tolino, and Joe and I have been part of the Highland Mills community for a very long time. I'm a native to Orange County. And I'm here to ask you, what would you have done in 1939 when Hitler segregated the Jews from Germany? Which side would you be on? Would you be boycotting Jewish shops, informing the whereabouts of Jews, hiding and aiding people toward escape, or would you remain silent? Would you, what would you have done in 1960 in New Orleans when schools were desegregated? Would you be picketing outside, spewing hateful words, keeping your own children away from Leona Tate, Ruby Bridges, Tessie Prevost, and Galatine, or would you remain silent, hoping the problem goes away? This summer, it was made quite clear where the administration and the Board of Education would fall in history because history is repeating itself right now. On June 13th, a law was passed that segregated our children. The repeal of religious exemption kicked 26,000 children out of school, and our children are among the victims. Our children cannot continue their education in New York State unless we violate our deeply rooted religious beliefs and vaccinate our children. Before anyone states there's no organized religion against vaccination, I ask you where the Constitution says that freedom of religion only applies to the major ones. It does not. So how did Monroe Woodbury's administrators and Board of Ed react to the segregation? You remained silent. You showed no outrage that healthy children are being kicked out of school and prevented from getting an education. You offered zero support to families like mine who are hurting financially and emotionally as their lives are being torn apart. I reached out to Mrs. Rodriguez over the summer, and I begged for support. I spoke of the districts on Long Island and elsewhere in New York State where superintendents and school boards are writing letters to the government saying, this is not right, this is not ethical, this is harming our community. I was told that fewer than 40 families are even affected in our district, and that I must speak for the majority of the community. You can scroll through Monroe Matters and Families of Woodbury's Facebook page to see what the majority speaks on this topic. It is vile and hateful. Families like mine are being told we should have our children taken away from us because we are bad parents. Community members wish our children to die of diseases. We are called stupid, dirty, and negligent, and that's the clean version of what you will see on Monroe Matters, your community. So I ask you again, do you stand with the majority, or is this what you believed about my children all along? You won't speak for the minority. Why won't you speak for our children and shout that they deserve an education? That unvaccinated children have been in New York State since the exemption law was put in place 56 years ago? That unvaccinated children are still going to be in school on Friday? Why are those children deserving an education and not mine? This is not an, there's not one instant, that any instance, that any school-aged child with a religious exemption has ever given a disease to another child. Not once. This is a false narrative that unvaccinated children are a health threat, and your silence continues to validate that false narrative. Our children are healthy. They are so healthy, you gave my son a perfect attendance award because he never missed school. Your silence is stealing from my children. Your silence is stealing the expand program at my sin Liam, warmed his tail off for it. Mr. Barone can speak to that. You are stealing his participation in symphonic band, which is a privilege for fifth graders to get into. You are stealing Jack's participation in modified football and after-school clubs. You are stealing Iris's excitement about playing the recorder for the first time. That is what she shouted on her first day of school. I get to play the recorder? No moving up ceremonies, no decorating lockers for birthdays, no proms, and most importantly, no bonds with teachers and friends. You are losing out on three totally awesome children. You are losing parents who are involved with the school and the greater community. We are PTA members. I have been class mom for my children. We volunteer for bake-offs, Field Day, science fairs, spring flings, you name it, we sign up. And it didn't stop with elementary school either. I run two Facebook pages for my children in middle school to offer homework support and organization for their friends. My husband coaches their sports teams. He is a member of the village planning board. We are dedicated not only to our children, but to the community they are a part of inside and outside of school. But we can't afford to stay. One of us needs to leave our full-time jobs to educate our children. We work full-time out of need, so we can no longer afford to live here. And ironically, our home will be bought up quickly by the people you have been fighting with legally for years. Many of the families who do not comply with this law will need to move. You are losing support. You are losing the support you need in budget votes. Addition, as stated before, 26,000 children are going to be in school. That means teacher jobs are going. This is a loss of staff and program cuts, and your own silence speaks volumes. We have all heard the poem by Martin Niemöller, "First they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist." We can go on and on. You didn't speak out for the unvaccinated because you weren't unvaccinated, but they're going to come for you. This is not just about families like mine. There are current bills in the work that, in the works that affect you. All teachers and staff are next on the mandate. It's on the bills. It's on the desks right now, Senate floor. There will be no religious exemptions for your staff members to go for, and medical exemptions are impossible. This is my son. This is what breathing air does to my son, and I can't get a medical exemption for him. Breathing air! And I'm supposed to pump crop into my son? I have tried desperately to get him a medical exemption, but we've been kicked out of our pediatrician. Doctors won't see us. After teachers and staff, it's moving on to all adults, and you can all look this up. Healthy People 2020 is the initiative. Look it up. Your vaccine status is going to be tied to your real ID that you've all applied for. And I'm ending with this. Your silence is based on misinformation. It's based on hate. It is based on prejudice. It is cowardly. You speak to not bullying in school and being an upstander, yet you don't model it yourselves. This will all come to a head soon, and I know my family's stance with truth, freedom, courage, and honor. My children have been to every rally and course appearance, and they say with pride that they are civil activists. We are upstanders, and we are not silent. They deserve an education.
Thank you. Elsie, do you want to say anything?
I do. You know, I did speak with Mrs. Tolino over the summer, and she did ask me to write the letter. And I was very, very honest, and I said, I represent the entire district. And what I did agree was that I would call up our district superintendent because they have the connection to the Board of Regents and just talk about the process. We were unaware that this was happening as a school district. And on June 13th, the law came along. And to say that we were silent, I think we've had, our school nurses have been working with parents, calling them, giving them guidance. And there are parents who, like yourself, Mrs. Tolino, who will not vaccinate your child, and I respect that. But this board and myself, we all take an oath. And the one oath that we take is that we have to follow the law. And the law has been very strict with, they have been very explicit as to what we can and cannot do. And I have to, as a superintendent and the board, is to follow the law that we are mandated. So we are very unhappy. This is not something that we want. This is unprecedented. We've never had to deal with something like this. We don't want, we want our children in our schools, but we also have to follow the law. And so...
Write a letter. Write a letter. Others who are then, across the state, and I will only ask you, write a letter, and you send out. So you're not, you're not giving people two words. You're not standing on my floor. You are not writing a letter. You are silent. You're following a law that you're silent about. People followed the law and killed the Jews. People followed the laws of Japanese war crimes. People followed the law and separated blacks from whites. You're segregating us. You're following the law. In a few years, you're going to see that you are just like all those Nazis that had ...
I beg your pardon. You did, you did, you did speak your piece before, and something, and I have, and I have remained silent.
I didn't say you are a Nazi.
I have, please, please.
Let me finish. Because I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Your time is up.
If you're a Nazi, I said, you're going to see what it's like, that after the war, there were always people exiled to Argentina because they were hiding from the fact that they didn't stand up.
I think your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Vasilyia and/or David Makeish?
Hi. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Vasilyia Makeish, and my husband David and I are here. We reside at 54 Woods Road in Tuxedo with our three children, who are currently enrolled in the Monroe Woodbury school system. We're here tonight because we've exhausted every other avenue in an attempt to try and ensure the safety of our son's bus transportation to high school. He's a freshman. He just started. Very excited about it, but somewhat disappointed that the transportation department would not comply, even after eight years of complying and coming up to our cul-de-sac to pick up our children. It's a safety issue. It's not just that we have a plethora of wildlife and bear running around. Our home backs up to national state parkland, which is protected. We have no streetlights. We have no sidewalks. And my son has to walk a quarter of a mile to the nearest bus stop at 6:00 in the morning, when it's pitch black out, with a knapsack on his back, with a lunchbox in tow, with wildlife running around. And I've seen it, and I have videos of it, that I'm happy to show everybody. To go down there, to stand on a street with a wooden bench, is just unacceptable. It's unsafe. And we're putting ourselves at risk, and we're leaving ourselves open for exposure.
Right.
For the last eight years, we've requested from transportation a face-to-face meeting with Dawn Russell, and every year, she has met with us, except this year. And every year for eight years, she's complied. She's had the bus come up, 30 seconds up the road, pick up our kids, they're always on time, get back on the bus, go back down the road again. It's never a big deal, until this year. And the answer that we were given was, your son is a freshman. He's in high school. We don't do that. We don't do that in high school. How does that mitigate any of the safety issues that I just put forth? We asked for the face-to-face meeting with Dawn. We got there. We took a day off of work to meet her, and she was in her office. And we were told, she's too busy to meet with you today. I get it. There's a lot going on before school starts. I do. I put my pants on the same way you all do. I'm a real person. But the bottom line is, you have to have respect for the parents who take time off out of their day, who need their jobs, to have a meeting that they are so concerned with, the safety of their children. This school district is constantly saying how the safety is the first thing that they're concerned about, the safety of the children. I'm not putting my child on a dark street, an unlit street with no sidewalks, with food in his backpack, to go catch a bus. It's not going to happen. I think personally, and I've met with an attorney about this already, I'm not going to lie, I would be responsible, and my husband would be responsible, for endangering the welfare of a child. I can't have that happen. I won't let it happen. I actually wanted to bring a video tonight of how dark it is on our street, and I wanted to walk the street, to go down to the bus stop, to show you how scary it is. And you want a 14-year-old to walk that walk? I'm 50 years old. I'm not walking that walk. It's not going to happen. Dawn Russell failed us, didn't get back, she didn't give us the answer we wanted. We then went on, I called Elsie Rodriguez's office. With all due respect, I never got a phone call back. I know you had a lot going on with the school year. I know you did. I respect that. But I'm a concerned parent. At the very least, I deserved, my husband deserved, a phone call back. We got it back from your assistant, who's super nice. But she promised that you would get back, and you didn't. I called three times. Nothing. Beyond that, we also called Mr. Cahill. Mr. Cahill called back. My husband spoke with him, took down a bunch of notes. We said, please, come up at 6:00 in the morning, walk the walk that our son is being asked to walk. He said, okay, I'm going to see what I can do, I'll get back to you by the end of the week. It's September 18th. I've not heard back from Mr. Cahill. I don't know where else to go. We didn't know where else to go, so we're here. And I know that bear are in our area. I get it. We all have them. We are absolutely infested with them where we are. There are no light streets. There are no plans to have light street, that you streetlights put on. There's no plans to have sidewalks put in. Why don't the children that are at the bottom of the hill, who are waiting for the bus, where the bus stop location, why don't they all come up to the cul-de-sac, where it's safe to turn around in the cul-de-sac? Ask their parents to have their children walk up at 6:00 in the morning in our neighborhood and come and pick up the bus. You'll be hearing from them too, if that happens.
Thank you.
There's just one question.
Sure.
Normally, the way that this works, my understanding is, is if you want a change of stop, that there's a form that you, and bear with me, there's a form that you have to fill out, and normally, the transportation department says, give us like two weeks. Is that what happened?
Did you fill out a form?
Yes.
Okay. My husband filled out a form.
We didn't get to speak to Dawn.
No, she, she was too busy to speak to us, and we never got a call back from her. We got a call back from one of our staff members, who in turn said, Dawn said no because they've never done it before, and your son is in high school.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we, can we get back to you?
Yeah, absolutely. I would love that. I appreciate your time. I appreciate that this is not being, you know, put on deaf ears right now. So anything you can do to keep the safety of our children is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Just a quick update, but I didn't get to tell my wife. I did have correspondence with Mr. Cahill just before I came here. He assured me that he'd get back to me by the end of the week, that he was going to personally look into this a little further. I do code enforcement in Tuxedo. It's definitely a dangerous situation. I'm trained to be proactive instead of reactive. I know if something happened to a kid in our neighborhood, the next day, you guys would be up in the dead end picking them up. I really don't feel we should wait till something happens. This is definitely a dangerous situation, not only for the bears, but for the people that are going to work. In three weeks, the clocks are going back an hour. It's going to be pitch black. I mean, if you come into my neighborhood, I invite all you guys to come in there. It is pitch black. You'd be like, wow. Because there's not one light. It's not safe for him to walk down there.
We'll be back to you then. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Lorraine Lonang.
Hi. Good evening, Lorraine Lonang, district resident. At the last board meeting, at the end of the meeting, there was a little policy grenade thrown about a mandatory meeting for parents and students to attend as a requirement to attend the prom. I have a couple of issues with that. I have a few specific ones, and then some general ones. My specific questions are regarding the methodology of this research. Mr. Casti said he spoke with, where the heck, 20 parents and 32 students. I was wondering if these students and parents were randomly chosen, or were they kind of picked? Did the idea to have this mandatory meeting come about organically by this group, or did a facilitator kind of lead them down a predetermined path? Those are important questions, I think. The other question I have is about, he said this was a big problem. And before I go any further, I want to say I'm opposed to underage drinking. Who the hell isn't, you know? So I mean, maybe if you're a 20-year-old sailor, you are. But you're, underage drinking, not good. But he was saying that this is a big problem. And big, these are words that really don't mean a lot. Are there any metrics or data that will tell us how many students were denied entry or removed from the prom based on having alcohol? Maybe it is a big problem, but maybe it's just a problem, you know? So those are my specific questions regarding this policy. My general objections are more, this is opening a door, I think, to a slippery slope. I asked a lot of folks, you know, how you felt about it. Some of my friends were like, this is a great idea. Some were like, hell no, this is government overreach. And some were like, Lorraine, what the hell do you care? You know? So around the gamut. But there's, well, this is absolutely, like I said, who's for underage drinking? But what if the next mandatory meeting was about sleep deprivation? Kids are coming to school tired. Maybe we need a parent meeting about bedtime. Or kids are coming to school underweight or overweight. We need a mandatory meeting about nutrition, or diet, or eating disorders. Or cheating or plagiarism is a big problem. Maybe we need a mandatory meeting about that. And I played this what-if game with the friends of mine who were like, this is a great idea. And if we played what-if long enough, eventually, I hit the what-if that. They're like, no, that's not cool. So I get that you guys have, are well-intentioned with this. What I'm opposing most is the mandatoriness of this. My kids went to the school, the whole gamut. I never went to, I never once went to a mandatory PTA meeting, or a parent-teacher conference, or a mandatory concert, all these things that would enrich a child if you were there. The fact that this is mandatory kind of bugs me a little bit. So that's, I think the mandatory part is what I object to the most. Perhaps make it voluntary, but kind of incent them to go buy, you know, five bucks off Or kids are coming to school underweight or overweight. We need a mandatory meeting about nutrition, or diet, or eating disorders. Or cheating or plagiarism is a big problem. Maybe we need a mandatory meeting about that. And I played this what-if game with the friends of mine who were like, this is a great idea. And if we played what-if long enough, eventually, I hit the what-if that they're like, no, that's not cool. So, I get that you guys have, are well-intentioned with this. What I'm opposing most is the mandatoriness of this. My kids went to the school, the whole gamut. I never once went to a mandatory PTA meeting, or a parent-teacher conference, or a mandatory concert, all these things that would enrich a child if you were there. The fact that this is mandatory kind of bugs me a little bit. So, that's, I think, the mandatory part is what I object to the most. Perhaps make it voluntary, but kind of incent them to go buy, you know, five bucks off a ticket or something like that. Because I do think that the door, once opened, could be taken advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll see you.
There has, just, your first question was about research. Was this organic? And I will tell you that, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Cassidy. Do I see him here? Is he here? Yeah. I don't want him to speak right now, but I do want to say a little bit about how this came about. So, we do what's called a youth risk survey every year, and I think it's the data that we get back that can be, I think that might have been the beginning of, hey, what's going on here? We're looking at our youth risk data, and we're very concerned about what we're seeing. That was the impetus, I think, to the things that have happened and why they went in that direction. I would rather have Mr. Cassidy maybe talk a little bit more about it at our next meeting. But I do know that those are, that's kind of the information that we've had, is when we do these youth risks, and we see what our students are doing, and we're very concerned about it. And we do want to make sure that, you know, they understand the risks that they're taking. And underage drinking has a lot of other implications, not just getting drunk, but the actions that take place after a child gets drunk. So, I'd rather have Mr. Cassidy do a little presentation about this at the next meeting to answer your questions.
Thank you. Do you have any update on previous questions or comments?
No.
From another meeting?
No.
All right. Onto something, and now for something completely different. We are pleased to welcome Scott Rosemar, a Monroe Woodbury alumnus. Who represents the Monroe Woodbury Alumni Inspire Success Scholarship Fund. When more than 750 members of our alumni came together this past June for a mega reunion, they made a commitment to establish a scholarship fund that will help future Monroe Woodbury graduates. You have something to say, Scott?
Yes, yes. I just...
I got that hint, because you were standing there.
Yeah.
Please.
It was just nice to come here. First time I'm in this building where I didn't have to pay my taxes, so I was happy about that. I'd like to acknowledge a few people who really got this fund going. First, Ray Riley, class of 75, class of 73, excuse me, who ran concerts in Monroe and came up with this idea, want to have a mega reunion, and, you know, try to give some money back to the school. He approached Phil Frandino of the fabulous Frandino Brothers. And Phil mentioned, well, speak to Scott. We had our class reunion up there a couple of years ago, maybe, you know, can use the place. So, Ray came to me, and I said, absolutely. And he started working with Deana Marie Berger-Eginis, class of 80, tried to get the ball rolling with me also. And then Peggy Heinz Porter, who was instrumental of all our class reunions. I decided, let me give Peggy a call, get her involved. And Peggy's great. She is involved in school tours and all these things, and we're, she's emailing back and forth. Of course, every email you get from Peggy is longer than any term paper I ever wrote. And I'd respond with, okay, yes, sure. But, and Peggy was class of 73. Also, Ed Scully, class of 86, he helped with our logo. Anyway, we had our reunion, June 1st, 750 people, concerts with all Monroe Woodbury graduate bands. And Peggy was the one who wanted to get the scholarship funded. And anyway, we raised, we have a lot of T-shirts left over. So, when you sell those T-shirts, and we give some money from MW Cares, close to $15,000. And I have a check here for the Monroe Woodbury Central School District for the Alumni Scholarship Fund for $10,550,000.
Scott, we thank you and all the alumni who have donated to this as a way of giving back to the Monroe Woodbury family. And I have a little token of our appreciation. And it's good to see you, Scott.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Terrific.
Let me take a picture.
Hmm?
Let me take a picture.
Take a picture. With a check, with a check.
That's different.
Yeah, wise guy. Tonight, we also recognize and express gratitude to one of the district's school safety officers, Recently, Mr. Gomez observed a child choking in the middle school cafeteria, and thanks to his quick action, he saved the student's life. The middle school recently recognized Mr. Gomez for his efforts, and we, as the Board of Education, would like to do the same. Middle school principal Michael Massano said this about Mr. Gomez. While in the cafeteria on assignment, Mr. Gomez observed a student choking on her food and immediately took life-saving actions. He successfully administered the Heimlich maneuver and supported the student as she began to breathe again. He safely transferred the student to the care of the school nurse so that she could fully recover from her ordeal in the health office. Mr. Gomez, the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education would like to publicly express our gratitude for your quick action, compassionate spirit, and service to the students in this district. Thank you so much.
Isn't that cool? Thank you. That's awesome.
I'd like to call a short, five-minute recess. And if there are any students here in the government class that want something signed, now's the time to do it. We'll be back in five minutes. All right, we will resume, we will resume the meeting. No Board of Education business took place during the break. We have reports by the Board of Education Committees. Chris, policy?
We're trying to schedule a meeting. It looks like we have it tentatively, I don't know if the other members got back to us yet, but it looks like we're going to try to do September 24th at 8:30 to start the ball rolling again. There's a couple of Mondays and Fridays, but we can't make it work, so if you're, can do it?
If it don't work.
8:30, September 24th, right now, tentatively.
Okay.
Then we'll get back to you what we discussed afterwards.
Thank you. Dawn, Visitation Committee and Orange County School Boards?
So, Orange County School Boards, the first meeting was basically a reorg meeting and introductory. I think the biggest takeaway was that we were joined by the representative from New York State School Board Association to talk about the conference. And it's something that resonated with me about what he was speaking, is that there's an opportunity for students to be a part of the conference and introduce something that they're working on in the school, some initiative, be it social-emotional, technology. So, we're going to be exploring that a little bit more. Visitation, we are scheduled to meet with the high school for a follow-up, and the middle school as well.
Very good. Thank you. Dawn?
So, we've had our, the fields have been used by, I think, most of our sports teams for the fall. And thank you, Patrick. Everything came in on time and worked very, very successfully. We have bathrooms and food trucks. I thought, I think, the comments back for the food trucks has been very, very positive. I don't know if you have any other updates on?
Not really since last weekend. I mean, we're focusing on the upper field now. There might be a few little things that we need to tweak. Nothing major at this point, but that would be the, you know, the emphasis going forward. We're substantially complete on, you know, field number three, the stadium field. You know, the track would be the, sort of the final piece, and we're going to do that, you know, after the conclusion of the fall season, so.
No, I thought, it was great. We were out there, some of the board members and administration were out there for the opening when the students came onto the field. And, I mean, it's such a change. I miss climbing up to midfield, though, and the 36-inch crown that used to be there. It's now flat as a pancake. Maybe we have drainage. Maybe we have a wonderful field. Maybe we have wonderful athletic facilities. Finally, thanks to everybody who moved that along. Dawn, you have anything?
Yeah, so also, I would like to specifically thank Bargoff and Patrick as both facilities and audit, and especially the other board members here. I don't know that everyone knows this, but last year, it was decided, based on the cybersecurity plan, to up our insurance from $250,000 to $1 million. So, that proved to be extremely, you all look like pretty much heroes right now. Because this will be an expensive one, but I think overall, and we've heard from quite a few other districts, I think we're now the resident expert. And I think, I know this is probably a bad analogy, but it's kind of like Sloan-Kettering. We are the most aggressive at going after this, and a lot of the pain that's been felt is because the policies and the procedures that are used here are very, very safe and aggressive, more so than we're finding at other schools who, we subsequently heard it, are still choosing to ignore some of the issues. So, I think that the result of this is, has been fantastic. And I'm really surprised at how fast the things that have gotten back up and running are. But I'm really impressed with the care that's been taken to make sure that everything's done right. So far, from what I understand, the insurance is paying for everything. And again, we didn't lose anything. You know, we recovered our data from the cloud because that was part of our cybersecurity plan. But at the same time, once something gets in, you have to go through and clean every machine to make sure it doesn't pop up again. And that's what we're seeing, is a lot of the delays. And Monroe Woodbury has about 9,000 devices. So, that attributes to the delay. But they're being very careful, as they should be. And we've already found from some other schools, there was another one that was a little quicker to get through their incident, and they just got hit again because they didn't go through and clean everything up. So, we'll probably experience a little bit of pain for a little longer, but in the long run, that's very impressive, especially with Bargoff, the tactics that are going on.
So, I just want to add something to that. Today, I got a call from a reporter from the Times Herald Record. And their question to me was, Chuck Schumer's office is supporting legislation, bipartisan legislation, that would give money to school districts. And what I found, you know, what he shared with me was that their belief that our school district was one of the best school districts that handled this. And so, they were just asking us, you know, what it is that we did, and how did we do all these different things? You know, how did we, what protocols did we put in place? I didn't share anything, Bargoff, so not to worry, because I've been told to be very careful what I share. But it was good to hear that our school district was being talked about by people in office to say, look, the way that we've handled this has been really, really textbook. I mean, there is no textbook, but we handled it very textbook-like. And they were very supportive of the way that we are addressing the issue.
I'm really surprised, especially, I mean, it's not surprising because the funding isn't there. That's why we have a three-year cyber plan, not a one-year cyber plan, because it would have impacted the taxpayers. But I think in the end, what's being corrected, and insurance is helping with that, should make us significantly better going forward. I'm still really shocked at what other schools are doing. I know, I know that there's been talk that, we've gotten calls that said, hey, our network's behaving kind of weird. And I know the comment is, you need to shut down right now, because that's the onset of what's about to happen. And the response is surprising, that most of them are like, we can't afford to shut our network down right now. It's like, it's, you either shut it down quick, or...
Or be shut down.
Suzanne?
Yeah, a quick comment, what you said, we may become the textbook example. I did want to bring up a question. I know you alluded to it in some of the emails, but just for the sake of everyone here and everyone who's going to be listening to us, how long does it take to go through one device? Because you said we have about 9,000. So, to clean one device, how long does that take? Just so they get a picture of how long this process is.
So, if you looked at this project, and again, if you separate out the fact that we stopped it, you still have that uncertainty, so you have to go through every device. The challenge with answering it, I can tell you, it's roughly an hour a device, roughly, ballpark. But, but you can do multiple devices at the same time. So, you can set up labs, which Bargoff is doing. But to give you an idea, Chromebooks wouldn't be affected because they don't store information on them. So, that eliminates about 4,000 of our devices, although there's other aspects that we have to take security measures. So, that still leaves you with about 5,000 devices. So, from a pure spreadsheet standpoint, it's about 5,000 hours.
That's a lot.
And cybersecurity people are about, maybe a little more than double what a normal network engineer is, so that also adds to the fun, so.
But we have insurance.
Insurance is paying for everything.
Thank goodness.
I want to...
Hopefully, the state will give us a couple of dollars.
I want to take a presidential privilege for a moment.
I want to present Bargoff with this hand engraved statuette.
Of you?
It's a likeness of me.
Bargoff by a MW IT wizard. I engraved it myself with a sharpie. Thank you so much for all you've done in the past several weeks.
Thank you.
Now.
Can I ask Patrick a question?
Yes.
With regards to the food trucks at the football game, has there been thought about expanding it, and what type of revenue stream comes from it?
There hasn't been a lot of thought about expanding it. We actually have a food trailer in the works, which we're going to receive very soon. Based on my conversations with the vendors and my conversations or emails with John Cassidy, when the student government usually handles the vending, and I think the, the donation that they would be receiving from the food trucks is going to be a little bit less than what they normally would make, and we have to weigh that against the idea that they don't have to do anything, they don't have to volunteer, you know, consider the quality of the food, you know, the whole, you know, the whole thing.
In comparison to the concession stand?
The normal concession stand, right. The normal concession operations, that's what I meant. So I think we have to evaluate it, you know, the whole thing, and, and weigh those things, those factors.
All right. Thank you.
Now, student, report by student representative to the Board of Education, Maeve Harrington.
Hello, everyone. Oh, okay. I wasn't sure I was going.
It's okay.
Hi. Hello, Allison. Okay. So I chose to do my report on a super, like, timely topic, because this seems to be a huge issue recently, vaping. So I'll start out with identifying them, because many people, like, when you think of the whole, like, vaping industry, you just think of, like, the jewels and, like, the little flash drives or USB sort of looking things. But what many people don't know is that there's other devices that look very different, and we just need to make our parents and students who are, you know, sort of fearing this aware. Like, they're very well-known for their discreetness, so people, like, it's easy for people to have them in, in school, in the workplace, like, at, at home, I guess, but they're odorless, which I don't know if people know that, yet there's visible smoke. And I saw on a website that it's described as a wolf in sheep's clothing, and here's We haven't really seen much, you know, like, feedback from what this actually does to your body, because it's so new. The jewels were actually created in 2017, but vaping has been around for, like, 12 years. It only just has become popular. As of yesterday, there are seven dead from lung disease from these devices, and reported there are 380 illnesses, but there's many, many people who still are sick that aren't getting treated for this, obviously. What this does to you is it raises your blood pressure and your adrenaline, which makes you very vulnerable to a heart attack. It harms adolescent brain development, like, ability to pay attention, and impulse control. The, the substance that's actually in the little pods is actually poisonous if it touches your skin or your eyes, or if you ingest it. And it contains enough, like, juice, I guess, that it would equal 20 cigarettes, so, which is very dangerous. So the, like, where to look out for, like, you, there's actually not that much advertising. Like, I feel like not many people have seen advertising for this, but it is out there. You could see it on radio stations and commercials and billboards everywhere. It's promoted as a safer alternative for smoking. And so we were actually supposed to be the generation to stop smoking cigarettes, and in March 1999, the Truth Initiative had, had came out, and I'm sure you guys are all familiar with it. Like, this was, this had made, like, I don't know, took steps towards ending smoking cigarettes. And now with all these devices, we see, like, an extreme increase in, like, young adults and teens smoking cigarettes, which is crazy to me. Most likely, you're going to see, like, influence in friends or older siblings, and just that it's considered cool, I guess. And then educating our district. I believe that we have a heavy population of students who actually do participate in this behavior, and I know me and Mr. Cassidy and the Drug Council have just met this past week, and we spoke on this topic. I, I want, I want to educate, like, the parents and the students, and obviously all the, like, faculty and administration on, like, how to approach this, and seriously, like, what it could do to you. So I plan on visiting every single school, and I'm going to time it out, but meeting with nurses and health teachers to discuss a plan that we can, you know, go over to, like, educate our students on this. I think that in the elementary schools, like, K through 5, take, they, they should have a light understanding of it, not to, like, shove it in their face for them to be scared of it, but just definitely know what it is, know how to identify it. And then I'm aware that fear tactics aren't usually, like, they're usually frowned upon, but I think that that's what is necessary for, like, 6 through 12, because that's really the only thing that it's, that we can do. And I know somebody had mentioned in the Drug Council that, like, fear only plays a factor for a short amount of time, and then people go right back to it. But I think that anything is something, and something needs to be done, so. That's it.
Thanks. Thank you, Maeve. Perhaps there, perhaps there are also initiatives in the county that you could, you and the high school administration perhaps could, could contact and coordinate something. Indeed, I remember when a college classmate of mine was one of the generals in the anti-smoking campaign, and 12 years ago, we were talking, and he said, "This is so good. This is really going to help." He was, I haven't talked to him recently, but I bet he's changed his tune, well, indeed a wolf in sheep's clothing. So any, you know, any help that you need from the administration and coordination, obviously. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to say a little something about it.
Yes.
Yes, exactly. I guess years ago, it was going to take the place of cigarettes, so basically it's just switching seats on the Titanic. It really didn't do anything else. And there isn't enough data on it. It's almost like when cigarettes, no one knew that cigarette smoking was dangerous, and it took one person to say, you know, to go ahead and lobby, and it took 30 years to finally get cigarettes or be, you know, being sold to children, or to be in front of, you know, their faces, and you have to show identification. It's a very long time. And, you know, hopefully, you know, kids, parents, the community will, will realize that this is really not a good alternative. There is withdrawing also. There is a withdrawing, a serious withdrawing component with this, and it's almost parallel to withdrawing from a drug. It's that bad. There is the whole gamut. I won't get into what happens during the withdrawal period, but it's, it's not very good. And I had sent an email about perhaps looking into some sort of detectors in the bathrooms, because, you know, you can't see it. You're right. You see it coming out of someone's mouth, but you don't see it as a cloud of smoke. You don't, there's no odor. So I don't know where these detectors could, where they're manufactured, where they are, how expensive they are, how many you need, but it definitely is needed, because people are still doing this, sneaking them in.
Right.
I mean, we have a policy. You know, you get caught, you know, you'll have a punishment, you know, suspension or whatever we have under policy for it, but yes, it's very easy to hide. I mean, they look like pens.
Yeah.
So.
Flash drives.
You know, and yeah, you can use a flash drive. Everyone allows that, because there's data on it, but it is actually, you know, people using it as a form of, a device to get their satisfaction. Thank you.
Thanks.
I just want to, oops.
I'm so sorry. You said lobbyist, and I think that's the big problem here, is that there's a lot of money now being put behind it to push it as a kind of a health, healthy alternative, that it's ending smoking, and there's really no long-term studies on what's gone on with the people who've been vaping for, for, for a while, and we're just now starting to see some of the negative reactions that can happen from it. It's not even FDA-approved, so.
No, it was, it was just a big thing on television, too, the news. They had the guy just the other day, and he was asked, "Would you let your children do this?" You know, and here's a guy pushing this. He's got a lot of money behind it, you know. It's probably, you know, who knows, somebody, either Philip Morris, you know, they're going to get their tobacco.
Philip Morris just bought Juve.
Yeah, they're going to get their tobacco in somewhere. They have a lot of money, so.
Ironically, as we've learned more and more about the dangers of vaping, I've seen more and more commercials for it.
Yeah, I know.
It's sad.
It's very sad.
It's very sad.
And they're still pushing the, like, the whole alternative scam.
Well, as a community, you know, what we have to do is probably go into the stores that are selling these things, and you have, you don't shop in there. You have to do, you know, you can do weights without, you have to be proactive about it. You know, there are places that sell, you know, you have these high, you know, executives in corporate America, you know, years ago, they, they put out a cute little, you know, rose, you know, that's sitting in a, in one of the stores, and you think, "Oh, that's a cute little rose, let me buy it," and it's a device to use crack cocaine. Okay? So there's ways and means of getting those things out on the streets, and we don't really know what they are.
Right.
And we think, "Oh, yeah, that's a cute little gift." And meanwhile, we have no idea what they're using it for.
Could you investigate it? Elsie, did you have anything to say?
I just want to say thank you for doing that, for doing this presentation, but the other thing I thought, as you were sitting there, have you thought about with Mr. Cassidy doing, you, we have the, doing a public announcement for the school?
Yeah.
For the morning show?
The morning show, when we have it.
When we come back.
When we come back online. But, but I think it might be a good idea that we do, yes, I forgot about that.
I had even, I had even suggested maybe bringing in speakers, like, if, I doubt, since there's such a little community that has been affected by this, like, if we could find somebody who has been affected by this, like, that's what.
You probably have students who have graduated who, who have been affected by this, so.
And, and that's who, that's who the students will listen to, because it's sort of level there, you know?
But thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, of course, thank you.
Personnel, Matt?
Good evening. I'm just requesting approval for the items listed under personnel.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved in second, and any questions for Matt? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Business and financial, Patrick?
John, I'd also respectfully request the approval of the items under the business and financial section, our standard monthly reports, unless the treasures report, which we couldn't do due to the network outage. We're declaring a handful of athletic equipment and IT equipment surplus obsolete, five contractor approval, and finally, a donation, an oil painting by Fred Mann.
Hope he is.
It's a painting of the Walton Lake School donated in his memory by his niece, Linda Sims Ficera. Fred Mann was a former Monroe Woodbury Buildings and Grounds Department employee, so it's...
It's a beautiful picture. It is, right?
Very lovely painting. We thank them for that.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Moved in second, and any questions for Patrick? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education items, 12.1, 2.3, 4.4 on the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Reports by Board and Central Office, Chris?
I just want to thank Bargoff and his whole community there for doing a good job, and a great job, actually, and I know it's going to be a little longer, and hope the district...
He got a statuette. He doesn't need it.
I just, you know, the district bears with us and knows that we are doing the best that we can try to do in this cyber world, and that's it.
Thank you, Don.
So I have a little bit more to say than that.
I'll show you. Most of the time you do.
It's been a while. Well, first, I want to talk about the fields and just say that they're beautiful, and to thank you to everybody that made that happen, and I didn't get to go to the opening football game, but I was at the opening of the fields, and amazing, so kudos to all. I want to talk about the cyber situation a little bit. I actually want to read a, a quick letter that I received from the PTA Council that says, "Monroe Woodbury residents learned last week that school districts are not immune to cybersecurity events. We live in the digital age of smartphones, network-enabled devices, connectivity with outside vendors, and the cloud. As more people in school districts embrace human-deviceing connections, this threat and risk of security tax grows. In fact, three of the New York school districts were also attacked in 2019 at the same time that we were under this situation. The Flagstaff Unified School District in Arizona had schools closed for two days due to ransom. While the parents and students went through hassle and disappointment of a delayed school opening, the Monroe Woodbury Central School District Administration and school principals worked around the clock to ensure the school could start with minimal delay while keeping the best interests of our students at the forefront. I would like to thank the MW CST administration, the school principals, and all the other personnel for their tireless work on behalf of the students, parents, and taxpayers of our community. Thank you, Shannon Chambers, Council President." And I echo that as well. You know, the, the level of commitment that I saw from everybody, the entire staff, was just, you know, beyond my, my expectation of how everyone came together so seamlessly to get everything up and running so quickly, so thank you for that. And I want to thank everybody for the support for the Go Gold initiative that is happening next Friday for pediatric cancer awareness. So MW is going to go gold, and, and we sold T-shirts, and I thank all the building principals for their support, and everybody that worked with me to get this done, and a special thanks to Mr. Cassidy for helping me with that. And then I just, just a quick note, and maybe I'm speaking more as a parent than as a board member here, and if I'm a little offline, but I just want to talk about the social host a little bit, because I, I feel that there, there's definitely more than anecdotal information that was received by the high school administration that would prompt something like this. I feel like in the community, people are talking about it, and I think that since this came out, there's definitely been a lot of talk about how there, there's a lot of support for the program, so I'm, I'm not speaking about, you know, who's on, you know, is it right thing to do, the wrong thing to do, remandating. I just think that, you know, being in the community and hearing from, you know, my children and their friends, that, that there's a bigger issue here than that we might not realize, and I think by us proactively looking at ways to, to help our students, you know, and just, once again, showing them that we don't just care, you know, academically, but we're there to support them socially and emotionally as well, that's the way that, that I perceived it. So I, I thank Mr. Cassidy and the high school administration for, again, looking to support our students socially and emotionally.
Don?
Great, that's a great, that's a great letter. I think the, the one thing that I would like to share is the, when, when this cyber event happened, the entire board, I think the, the comment on the opening day was, "As long as the teachers are showing up, we're fine," because we have some of the best teachers in the county. So I think from the entire board's standpoint, the, we knew Bargoff had it, but more important, we knew that we have the best teachers in the region, so once, if they show up, the rest of it's easy.
Thanks. Suzanne?
Yep. First, I'd like to thank the alumni who started the scholarship fund and for their generous donation, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Gomez again, even though I know he's left by now. Bargoff, great job, and also kudos to the teachers who went back to old school and, and did what they have to do, which is, it's amazing. You're amazing. I'd also like to thank Maeve for taking a proactive approach to this very important topic. Thank you, and have a good night.
Maeve?
I'd like to apologize for missing the last meeting. I was, but, um, other than that, I'd like to, I don't know, just, few last, but the janitor saved the girls' life. I thought that was a pretty crazy story. I didn't hear about that, so I thought that was great. And have a great night, everyone.
Donna?
I just wanted to say something as an employee. Thank you to Mrs. Rodriguez and all the district leaders and the board for your unwavering leadership these past couple of weeks, your support and your commitment to all of us, validating what a special and awesome place Monroe Woodbury is to work, live, and most importantly, learn. Sweet, thank you.
Thank you.
And happy birthday to Stacy.
Happy birthday, Stacy.
Happy birthday. 29, 29, everybody.
Anything new?
So I, yeah, I do want to say thank you to all the stakeholders, the staff, students, parents, administrators, board members, Mrs. Rodriguez, and my colleagues. I'm just a face. There is an entire team behind it, behind the scenes, so truly, this is not me, it's the team, and I'm blessed to have an awesome team around me, but you guys stood up and, and really took this, and then took it to the next level, and welcomed our students and staff. So I know it's very hard for you. I feel the pain, but we'll get through this. We'll get through this very soon. It's a long process, however, we have the right people involved, we have a right team, and great support from all of you, so I truly, truly, truly appreciate all your help with this. The other part is, we are not out of the woods yet, so it's a very tedious process. It's one day at a time. If you would have asked me yesterday, I was not, I was miserable, but today's a better day, and tomorrow will be another better day. So it's a long process for us. To date, we have no evidence of any breach of the data, which is very positive, and we are hoping to keep that going. We're working this week to bring, as Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned in her email, to the staff. This week, we should have most of the servers up and running, and... This week, we should have most of the servers up and running, and next week, we are planning to bring the wireless up, so then we'll have about 4,000 Chromebooks Plus connect to our network. Again, thank you, community, all of you. Truly, it's, it's a very interesting experience, but again, it's very rewarding in a positive way to see how the whole community as Monroe Woodbury come together and handle this problem, not just a technology problem, but truly, it's an opportunity for us to rise and come together and handle this. Thank you.
Eric?
Welcome back, everybody. I, I had an opportunity to attend a bunch of the games on the new fields, and I just have to say, as, as a former coach in the school district, it is a truly exciting time to be able to participate in those openings that we've had between the soccer games and the football games. So just like a, a quick shout out to everybody that's been involved, from the business office, even on the tech side, buildings and grounds, athletics, of working through that. It was, last week was an awesome, awesome, awesome week to sort of enjoy that and watch the kids be out there enjoying the new facility. So it's, it's really cool. Quick thank you to all the buildings. Yesterday was Constitution Day, so, you know, I know people were looking through non-internet necessarily related activities, so they dusted off the 232-year-old Constitution and, and recognized the signing of the Constitution. And a quick shout out to Pine Tree. You guys have an awesome event every year and recognizing that. And to retired teacher Paulus Graham for coming back and teaching the kids about the Constitution. So thanks for that.
Patrick?
Yeah, just wanted to reiterate our thank you to Bogoff and the team. I know it is a team effort. We've been communication, and I know it's a tough, tough time. I also wanted to thank the business office and the payroll unit. They worked a lot of overtime to get the payroll done on time. There were some deadlines that we had to meet, and we did it. And also want to send a shout out to transportation, because I know this is very difficult on our transportation department. They were flying blind, so to speak, without Versatrans, which is our routing software. And I think they really sort of rallied and came together as a unit and got kids to school, you know, under very trying circumstances. So thank you. Go on to your own routine. That's it.
Matt?
I, I just kind of echo, echo everybody else. The fields are great. The start was interesting, as Bogoff said. People really did continue to step up. The teachers have been wonderful. Don, I agree with what you said 100%. You know, cyber threat aside, the teachers here are, are just that good. So we know they're in good hands, and they're going to learn as well as they can. I love that it's open house season. I love going to open houses. I don't need to go to any more that I'm assigned to, but they are, I said to, I said to the principals last night, they're always one of my favorite nights as a building principal, because you say your thing, and then you just walk around for an hour and you connect with people. So it's open house season, and that's great. And I also want to say, I sat in the very top row at, at the football game, and the view being on the sideline is, is great, but when you're in that top row and you see everything, you know, it is, it is a wonderful thing to see, and a big thank you to everybody. And how are they saying?
Hi.
Okay, ditto, 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 and thank you, Bogoff. I'd like to thank the, the parents that spoke. And I'd like to say something as a parent and as a person. And when, when I'm on the board here, you know, I have to be extremely neutral, and I have to abide by certain things, but as a person, I want to say that my heart really goes out to those children and those families. I'm a parent with a child with disabilities. I know all too well about what inclusion and exclusion feels like. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can move the needle on this, because, you know, you brought up some very, very serious stuff, and it's a very sensitive issue, and my heart is definitely with you. And I just want to just say that, because I, I definitely am, I don't feel, I could speak for everyone, I don't think anybody wants that to happen, and especially turn away a child. And I wanted to echo, you know, what Lorraine was talking about with, when Mr. Cassidy brought this up at the last meeting, I had some concerns and some issues. I'm a, a substance abuse counselor, and no matter what I think or how I feel about drinking or underage drinking, there is culture that I had to learn about. And whether you are drinking one drink and you're underage, or you're getting inebriated, it's underage drinking. But I have to understand and, and know that there are cultures that allow that. So to put a mandate as well, I, I feel that that's something that should be maybe considered and thought about, having parents who may have a specific culture. I'm not saying, I'm speaking, and I'm not going to.
Maybe I don't understand something. I mean, I don't think it's saying that you, as a parent, can't do what you want with your children. I mean, I think it's.
No, I think that it's the mandate of going to a class, taking a parent and bringing them in, and not allowing their child to maybe go to a prom if they don't show up. I think there's a little more to that, and, or maybe I'm missing the whole point of the mandate of going. I don't feel like if a parent has a certain culture that, you know, they have to go somewhere. I, I don't know. I'm just, I had a feeling about it, that's, and I'm totally against drugs and alcohol. I mean, totally, but that's, as, as what I felt is you're telling someone what to do, and a child is, you know, maybe very innocent, and maybe if a parent decides, I don't want to go. You know, we don't really know what people's circumstances are or what they stand for. They, they may say, I'm not poised, you're not going to make me. I have to work, I have to do this, I don't want to show up, I, I don't need to. We just don't know. And to, to punish a child not to go to a prom, I just, I'm not sure how I feel about that. I just want to put that out there. So I'm, I'm also on the fence. The cyber threat, I mean, you know, this was really unbelievable. I can't even imagine the depth that this went into and, and the people that are in this generation that depend on computers. And like, me, I thought, wonderful, they're going back to old school. They're going to learn what it's like to have paper and pen. And personally, I think, and I sent an email out, that I think that once a week, or maybe once a couple of weeks, we should actually just put out the books and the paper and the pen. I mean, you know, it, it, bring back penmanship, you know, bring back cursive, all this stuff that has been taken away from these kids that, you know, they probably were like, oh my God, what do we do? So I, I'm for paper and pen. I'm still a person that writes notes, I'm still a person that has a planner, I'm still about that. And I think that's about it. And happy birthday and have a great night.
Thank you. Stacy?
Thank you. I want to welcome everybody back to school. I'm sorry that I had to leave early at the last meeting. I had a son that was, we were sending off to college, so it went well and went back. I'm excited for the school year. I know it's been an interesting couple of weeks, but I, I echo what everybody has said here, that I have three students who are in the schools, and when I asked how they were impacted, they said they weren't. With the exception of having to log into Google Classroom at home, I don't think that they really felt much of a, of a wave. So I think that's a credit to the teachers and the administration, that thing seemed to be going very well. I want to echo again about the turf. I was fortunate to go. I think I sat with Dr. Huster and, and Mr. Kravitz on a couple of the games. And I really just want to encourage the community, even if you don't have a child participating in sports, we know that this was a community endeavor, the passing of the bonds, the getting the fields accomplished. And I think it's just great to see those kids out there. Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the next game on the field is tomorrow with JV football at 4:00 PM. The weather is beautiful, so I encourage the community to come out and watch a game. The schedule can be found on our website and on at Lori's Activity Schedulers. So football, soccer, there's a lot of games coming up. I encourage everybody to get out there. I want to thank Maeve for speaking about the vaping. I know that that is a really hot-button topic that even us board members have been discussing. And I know that it's something that, going back to the social host and some of the prom stuff that we've had, I have to commend Mr. Cassidy, because I think a lot of the stuff that comes from the high school, from my understanding of it, is it's coming from the students. A lot of this, which is also a reason why we've been fortunate to have a board, a student board rep on the board, is the kids these days are very vocal, and they're letting us as board members and administrators and teachers know what is impacting their lives. And I think the social drinking, and I think the vaping, are two hot-button topics that as the mom of three kids, well, excuse me, four kids, but three in the school, I don't want to stick my head in the sand. So I'm thankful for any education that I can get from anyone, and so I'm, I'm appreciative of that. I think those are great things that are coming up. In fact, I plan to be there next Monday with all three of my kids at Town Hall, which is the first opportunity to see it. And so I appreciate that. I also, over the spring, was accepted into an advisory council with Assemblyman Colin Schmidt. So I will be sitting on an education advisory board with him and select other members of the Orange County community, whether it be school board members, administrators, parents. I encourage anybody who's listening to this and has an interest to visit, I forgive me, I don't have the website, but if you go to Colin's website, and you can reach out to Jenna Knight, which is his representative that takes all the information, they are still looking for advocates and information, so I'm going to be sitting on that panel. I met with Mrs. Rodriguez to discuss a few things that we here at Monroe Woodbury might be impacted by with some of the legislation. So we will work throughout the school year, and hopefully, I will attend a few of those meetings coming up and report back on some of that. And I think that's it. Have a great night.
Thank you. Anthony?
I just want to echo and thank you, Bogoff, and the whole IT team, really all the faculty and staff and administration. I know that, I carry this around from my job, and without this and without the computers, I wouldn't know what to do. And you guys have really pulled it off remarkably and come together as a team. I have two kids in the school district, too, and neither one of them said really anything changed. Pretty much, it's been business as usual, and I think that's absolutely remarkable. So I think you guys should be commended for that. I, too, went to the field and caught the football game the first, the first night. Not the greatest showing by our team, but the, the facilities were just really remarkable, and it, and it gave us something to, to actually look at and see, something tangible that we, we do and did for the community. We do a lot of things, but that was just something right out there in front of you that I thought, after such a tumultuous week, it was great for the community to come out and see something, you know, proud and exciting for the whole community. So thank you for that, too, and that's it. Have a good evening.
Dan?
I guess from my point of view, teachers, it's probably the easiest group to go without technology. I think everybody else had a much tougher time. You know, I don't think Patrick does anything that doesn't involve a computer of sorts, and that's like that around the district. I want to commend Elsie for having the bravery to cancel school for the first day within, what, 24 hours of the start?
Yes.
Although a big cheer from the students for extending their summer vacation.
I did.
They're much appreciated. I did get to go to the football game. The field looks fantastic. It's a, it's going to be a real sense of pride for the district. It was a great night. The stands were packed. Again, I would have liked to see a different outcome of the game, but there's always next week. The Crusader costume, my God, that is awesome. If you haven't seen.
I thought that was she.
I thought it was Elsie.
Yeah.
If you haven't seen the mascot.
It is.
It looks.
It is not Elsie.
It could be.
It could be, but it's not.
Sometimes. It's a little tall. I think it's a little taller. Which it looks. I think it's a great costume. I understand there's a contest going on to name this individual. Are board members allowed to participate? Because I'm ready to shoot a couple names down.
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Look for the Cape Crusader, whatever you want to call him, Captain Crusader, at the next game. It's, I think he's great to have around, he or she, whoever might be hiding in the costume. And finally, with Matt, I like open houses. It's nice to see all the parents come out, you know, start of the year, everybody's happy, everybody's optimistic, the weather's still good, and I'm, I'm looking forward to that, to, you know, going around to a couple of different schools. Other than that, it's a great start to the year, only nine and a half months to go, and have a good night.
All right. Elsie?
I just want to say it was a great start to the year, especially for the first day when the students didn't have school. We made that decision, and it happened, and the following day, when the students came to school, we were ready for them. So I have to thank everybody in the district, everyone. Everyone participated and made sure that our kids were here, that were safe, we had all the information that we needed. So thank you to the entire school district for doing that, and the parents for being supportive and understanding. And it's been a great start of the school year. I've had the chance to visit all the buildings. Kids are happy and laughing and having a good time and learning, and the teachers are smiling. And one caveat about not having computers, teachers are saying that they now have to look up to see where the students are and make eye contact with them. So maybe it was me who did all this, because I'm only kidding, it was not me.
Oh.
But I think, I think there's, we have a saying